Hi to welcome everybody to our council meeting tonight. I'd like to call the meeting to order. I'd like Pastor Fair if he's ready to lead us in a word of prayer and write for my prayer regarding to the pledge of allegiance.
Let's pray. God, we do thank you so much for today and the blessings of life that you've sent each one of us. God, we thank you for this time that you've sent us all here tonight. God, I do pray especially for this council and our mayor in front of us, God, that you would touch each and every one of them. God, that you would fill them with your wisdom and your guidance to lead this city that we call Northport. God, we thank you again for your hand of protection and ask a special blessing upon everyone here tonight. We ask all this in Christ's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Swan, call roll please.
President Logan.
Here.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Here.
Councilman Sims.
Here.
Web form, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item five is approval of the agenda, ladies and gentlemen. We have a short agenda tonight. I'll make a motion to approve the agenda as printed. There's second.
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Item six is visitors to address the council. Mr. Jerry Skinner. Good evening, Mr. Skinner.
My name is Jimmy Holloman, Brother Jerry. I'm speaking tonight.
Okay. Good evening. State your name and address for the record.
My name is Jimmy Holloman, 12620 Hickory Drive, Northport. I'm the pastor of Oregonia Baptist Church, and I want to ask you about the Kentuck Park, where you voted to sell alcohol and it's supposed to be a family-oriented festival. But we don't want our kids exposed to all this. I mean, we want to take a stand. Because that's not what we want our kids to see. That's not the environment we should be bringing our kids up in. And it's not the environment that we want Northport to be representative of. We don't want Northport to be representative as a drinking town. We want to attract people to come to Northport to live, to work, and to shop. You start selling alcohol in a festival for kids, next step's going to be selling it at the ballgame down there at Kentuck. Hey, you made money on it to start with, so let's sell it again. But that's saying what we want. We've already had one little girl get run over right there in the doorsteps of Kentuck Park at the airshow by a drunk driver. You start selling alcohol out there at Kentuck. Who's to say a man won't drink one too many and get in the car and run over another kid? And that's something you have to look at the rest of your life if you voted for it. So we just wanted to let you know that we oppose it. And all you behind me that oppose the selling alcohol, if you would, please stand up. There's several area churches represented, several preachers in here. We just wanted to let y'all know how we feel. Because they'll say it's the Lord. It's not what the man wants, it's what God says. I appreciate y'all letting me address it. The Lord woke me up in the night and convicted me of this. I wouldn't be here speaking to you if he didn't. He told me, he got on to me for not standing up and taking a stand for him. So that's why I'm here to tell you what the conviction has laid upon my heart. Brother Dax, you got anything you want to say?
Just, my name's Dax Wayne Castro. You know, it wasn't too many decades ago alcohol was just like a drug or anything else. It was illegal. Folks got paid to go find steals and bust them up. And I can just testify, you know, I've never seen anything good come out of it, especially around kids. It like destroyed my family. Like destroyed me in high school, and then I brought it into my family. And to think that, you know, well, we'll just do it in moderation. It's a delusion to think you can control sin. You can't control it. It'll end up controlling you. So I'm just here to represent what these people believe. I believe it's wrong. I believe it's stepping in the wrong direction. I wish it was like it used to be, where it was illegal. I know there ain't no perfect world. It ain't going to be perfect here. None of us are perfect. We all messed up. And I'm not here to preach to you, but we really need to consider what we're doing. I mean, Northport is a small town, good folks, good community, closeness. And you're going to turn it into something that's going to be, well, you show me a community where alcohol has just been welcomed and welcomed. Show me one community where it's brought in good behaving people, moral people, more than it's brought in DUIs, people getting killed at the hands of people who's overdrinking. I mean, you can't do it. You can't do it. And it's downright sin. Bible says wine is a mauler and strong drink is raging. And whosoever is deceived thereby is not wise. That's not my words. That's God's words. He wrote it in the Bible. And we're just trying to live by it. And thank you for letting us speak.
Jimmy and Mr. Dax, I wanted to make sure, and I know I asked Amy Echols with Kentuck Festival to maybe come by and give us a, just an update and as far as her process of the whole event. So Amy, I know you may be in the audience.
My name is Amy Echols. I live at fourteen oh seven River Road Drive, Tuscaloosa, Alabama. Okay, City Council, I've got to admit, I at first was a little concerned about beer at the festival because that's not what Kentuck is about. We have activities, free activities for kids that, you know, we have four to seven thousand kids. And the last thing I want to know to happen at the festival is our artists, who are, a lot of them are just soul-seeking, God-fearing people, they work all year to bring their wares. The last thing I want to do is have some kind of non-family atmosphere at the festival. So as the process came along, I realized how hard it is to have beer at the festival. You have to go through ABC license, you have to go through insurance. And I was like, oh no, what if these volunteers over-serve people? Well, we have to pay for people who are professionals, who know how not to over-serve people. And so it's a very strict process. Craft beer is not your normal five-dollar, throw'em-down beers. It's an artisan beer, which goes along with our artistic theme at Kentuck. And I hope, actually, I was planning on just sneaking beer in to not making it a big deal. People have protested and now it's on the front page, and I don't want people coming to Kentuck to drink beer. I want them there to buy the art. But if we don't expand our thinking and have faith in our fellow man that they're not going to sin and over-drink, you know, and like you said, people are human and they're going to try. But we've hired people who actually know how to stop that from happening. And I have so much confidence in the City Council and Kentuck and our Northport Police Force, who are always there, and the person that we are hiring. And as far as making money, we're probably going to lose money doing this. It's not a money maker. We don't want to become, you know, the beer-drinking festival. We still want to be known as our art festival. So I have a lot of confidence that this is just going to add to and not distract. And since y'all are God-fearing people, please pray that nobody gets run over. That was a tragic thing that happened with the airshow. So I appreciate y'all giving me time to speak. And I'm excited that we have gone through a lot of trouble to make sure it is the best festival ever and to make every one of you and the citizens proud.
Thank you. Amy, and thank you to Mr. Jimmy and Mr. Dax for addressing council. Second visitor is Dr. Patricia Parmley. Dr. Patricia Parmley, she's with the UA Research Institute for Aging. Doctor?
Thank you very much. Thank you for making time. We're here to ask your help. The Alabama Research Institute on Aging does research on issues in aging with the notion that what we want to end up doing is helping the communities in which we live. And toward that end, we have some work going on that has to do with family caregiving. I don't know if y'all are aware of the numbers, but roughly one in five families in this country is taking care of an older adult at home. And about seventy, eighty percent of the care that is given to older adults in this country is given by family members at home. They save the healthcare industry billions of dollars a year. They cost themselves about twelve thousand dollars a year, taking care of their loved ones. It's a very stressful process. It's well documented, the rates of depression and anxiety and even hastened death among family caregivers, particularly to people with Alzheimer's disease because it's such a distressing disorder. I'm sure y'all, I'm talking to the choir, I'm sure here. We want to reach out, we're asking your help in helping us to figure out how to reach out to the community because we've put together some research, and I don't make any bones about it being research, but we've developed some programs for family caregivers in which we've set up a system where, I'll give you a little background. There's been a lot of work done on this. And we've discovered that good social support programs and good programs, support programs for caregivers to older adults work. But the caregivers can't get to them. Because if you've got somebody who's got Alzheimer's at home, you can't leave the house once a week for two or three hours a day to go down to the, to the community center and go to a support group meeting. So we've come up with the notion that what we need to do is to recruit people who've been there and done that, who've been family caregivers, who know what it's like, and to pair them up with folks who are going through it now to see if we can't get some help to people in learning how to manage their problems. And this is a project that we've developed and is ongoing at the university now. We're getting it off the ground, and we can't figure out how to reach out to the community to let people know about this program, to get the word out so that we can, we hope, get some help to caregivers, get some meaningful give back, paying it back for those who have been through the process. And we're just here to ask y'all's help and I'm reaching out to the community of Northport. And I lost Caroline. One of my undergraduate students, Caroline Whittington, is here with me. It was her idea to be here. Could we leave some materials with y'all for distribution to the group?
Yes, ma'am, that'd be good.
Thank you so much. I appreciate your time. And if anyone has any ideas they'd like to share, please look us up, aria.uam.edu. Thank you very much.
Thank you, doctor. Item seven A one is a second reading of unfinished business. It's an ordinance ordering the demolition of an unsafe structure located at eighteen eleven Lurleen Wallace Boulevard. Mr. Stevens, this is the, what I call the old Chevron gas station at the corner of Nineteenth and Lurleen.
Yes, sir, that's correct. This is the second reading. A notice was placed on the structure a little over forty-five days ago announcing the intention to demolition or at least seek to bring the property back into compliance with the building code. And this will be the second reading to establish the demolition and begin that process.
All right, in our pre-meeting, ladies and gentlemen, we had three gentlemen who, who wished to address council regarding an extension. And I'll ask Ken to maybe come up. But first, Ken, what I'll do is I'll open the floor by, state code, we'll open the floor for a public hearing regarding the agenda item. Floor is open.
Thanks, sir.
Ken, please state your name and address for the record.
I'm Ken Akok, eleven oh seven twenty-third Avenue in Tuscaloosa. I appreciate the opportunity to speak to y'all today. As I said earlier, I represent Norton Realty, who purchased property a couple of months back. We knew it was in bad shape and would need to be addressed and had been planning on doing that. But as soon as we cut the property purchased, we got a love letter from the city planning department letting us know we need to move along. We've been in the process of developing plans on that structure. It's sort of a time issue with, with where we were in, in terms of y'all's condemnation effort. So that's why we were asking for another sixty days to, to get our, to get our plans together, building permit put together. The owner of Norton Realty is Mr. Calabani, who's here with me. And the primary tenant that we've been working with on the property is also here, Mr. J. Griffin, who's seeking to put a cleaners in that facility. So we think it'll, it should easily be done within that time period and be a real asset for the city once finished.
All right, Ken, so really, you guys bought the property, Mr. A bought the property out of Norton Realty. Once you got the property, you inherited all of the...
We inherited all of the, all of the faults that it came with, yes.
And you got a letter from the city saying, please tear it down?
Pretty much, yeah.
All right. So really, you're asking for sixty days because you've got a good tenant, Mr. Griffin, Griffin Cleaners?
Yes, sir.
Used to be Jerry's Cleaner, so to speak, but Griffin Cleaners? What else are you planning for that, that space?
Well, we met with the city staff sometime back about looking to see if we could expand the building to put more than, more than just the one tenant in it and see what sort of parking requirements we've got. I've been working with Fitz Architects in Tuscaloosa with regard to the size, footprint of a building versus parking restrictions on that location. And that's kind of some of the things that we just really hadn't had a chance to, to nail down yet. But I want to make sure that we end up with, with good retail tenants in that location. And, you know, the building to get it fixed up is, should be a nice building. So I'm hoping we'll get some high-end, high-end clientele renting from us there.
It's already zoned commercial, right, Scott? That's...
Yes, sir. C-three.
Oh, C-three, okay.
I'm moved to approve that extension, Joe.
All right. Let me, let me get the language right, Ron. We're going to basically, are we deferring your demolition? Because really, you need thirty, Ken, you're going to need thirty to get it up to code and then probably another, another thirty days to go through your process of one, a tenant acquisition and plans and things of that nature. So really, one, you got to get the building up to code, so you got to do that. And then we'll, we'll let you go through the proper planning and zoning and ZBA and all that.
Correct.
Okay. Got a motion on the floor by Councilman Sims to, to defer the demolition of an unsafe structure located at eighteen eleven for no more than sixty days. What is that, November the nineteenth? All right, I'll, I'll make that as a second.
Second?
I beat you to it.
Oh, okay.
I beat you to it. We got a, we got a motion by council member Sims, second by council president Logan, and a second A. I'll call it a second A by councilwoman Hayes, but I beat you to it. All right. Any questions or comments regarding the, the extension? All right, here now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Hey, Ken, if you would, keep us up to date as far as what other tenant you may have to come in. I'm sure it's going to be great because anybody know Griffin Cleaners, they do a good job, but let us know.
I'll keep email, let you know what's going on.
Let, let me know what's going on, and of course, staff will be happy to help you walk through that process.
We're going to need it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, item eight A one is a first reading of an ordinance annexing zero point seven five acres located at four one zero four Forty-third Street. Mr. Stevens, again, this is simply a favorable recommendation for our planning and zoning. It's annexing point seven five acres, so I will offer that for a first reading. Item eight B one is a resolution executed in agreement with Keosera Document Solutions for a copier in the water billing office. Mr. Ingram, this is basically a way to consolidate some of our copying needs in our water billing office. It's a state bid vendor for a sixty-month rental at about two thousand dollars per year, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. President.
All right. I'll make a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our city administrator's office to execute the agreement with Keosera Document Solutions for a copier in the water billing office. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilman Sims. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Item two is a resolution authorizing our mayor's office to execute a joint funding agreement with the Tuscaloosa County Road Improvement Commission. Again, this is part of the commission that was formed based, based on our sales tax redistribution. And we have some good news. Mr. Davis, if you'll give us a brief synopsis.
Yes, sir. Yesterday, Councilman Sims' wife asked him could he handle this intersection. So he called the city this morning, and this is what we've been able to do in about eight hours. The county road commission's indicated they would take over the city's twenty percent of this project. Basically, what we'll do, if you're traveling east on Union Chapel Road, as you hit Highway sixty-nine, you come to a red light, and then you wait, and then you turn right. You go in front of the Shell Station, then you turn left and keep on going. What this will do will align those two roads so you can go straight through that intersection. It's a three-point-nine million dollar project. The city's portion is eight hundred thousand dollars. And what this would do would allow the city to continue to manage that project. But the road commission would pay for that project. The, as you know, the new allocation of the recent sales tax provided monies to the road commission. The city's going to get reimbursed for Midlary Road expenditures under that act. And we are very appreciative of the state legislature in moving that and everyone that worked toward that. So this will be another eight hundred thousand dollars that the city will not have to, to expend. But a few monies we've spent on engineering to date will be reimbursed to the city by the road commission. That's enough for Councilmember Sims.
All right, is there a motion?
I'm sorry. Is there a motion to approve? And before we go through our motion, just, just to reiterate, this is part of the road commission's redistribution of the sales tax. This is basically a full reimbursement of our match money that we normally would have to pay out of city coffers. Again, also, the soft costs such as engineering up to this point will be reimbursed from the road commission proceeds of the redistribution of the sales tax. Is there a motion to approve that resolution authorizing our mayor to execute the joint funding agreement with the road commission related to road improvements on Highway sixty-nine and Union Chapel Road?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. That's a motion by council, council member Sims. There's a second.
Second.
Second by councilwoman Hayes? Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
President Logan.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Mr. President, as I stated in the pre-meeting, in the last couple of months now, the citizens of Northport have saved approximately eight point three million dollars of funds that we would have had to have spent as far as the reimbursement for the Midlary Road project, which is about seven and a half million, and then the eight hundred thousand for the Union Chapel project. Just as Ron stated, want to give, anytime you can thank the state delegation of the city of Tuscaloosa, Tuscaloosa County, and the city of Northport. We've got some great things on the horizon, more money to be saved, and more projects to be done.
Thank you. Item C is our consent agenda. We have nine items. They range from minutes of the previous meeting, bill listing, travel and training, appeal requisitions, of course. One in particular is our new pump for lift station number one out of Morrow Water Technologies for sixteen thousand five hundred forty-six dollars and eighty cents. Again, items one through nine are up for council approval. I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda as printed. Is there a second?
Second.
Uh-oh. I'll defer to the, to the young lady. That's a second by councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments? Hearing now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan.
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes.
Yes.
Councilman Sims.
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President.
Thank you. Item ten is, excuse me, item nine is reports of special committees to council. We have none to report tonight. Item ten, public hearings, of course. We went through our demolition, and we've got a pretty good resolution with Ken and his staff. And look forward to bringing in some new business at that corner. So thank you guys so much. If you've got some more business you want to bring in, we're not going to stop you, okay? Item eleven, city administrator's business. Mr. Swan. Item twelve, departmental business. We have none to report. Item thirteen is public comment. We have two citizens signed to speak. First one is Mr. Jody Jobson. Mr. Jobson, thank you. Please state your name and address for the record.
I am Jody Jobson. I live at fifteen thirty-four Bellwood Lane, Northport, Alabama. And I'm not picking on anybody tonight. It's just questions that need to be answered. Ron, has the city of Northport, about three councils or four council meetings ago, I requested that everybody join together and let's move this thing forward. Mayor, council, all department heads, everybody, so we could go forward. Has the Northport City Council been fully informed on any ongoing lawsuits the city of Northport is currently involved with, including personnel or employee or other matters? If not, why?
We have provided that information to the council. There are some employee lawsuits that are being handled by our insurance company. There are about four pending, I believe.
I have a statement. I've asked Ron Davis four times for that list, and he has yet to provide it to me. Wanted to put that in, but I also asked him to hand it to me today at this meeting. He did not. I gave him until tomorrow. I'd like to have it tomorrow, and I would appreciate it very much. Thank you, Ron.
Mr. Rose and I met with Ms. Hayes and gave her a list of those employee lawsuits. Probably glad to do that again.
Gave me a list of the, the insurance cases. There were about six, I think, somewhere around that number.
Do what? I'm sorry.
Oh, I was just responding to our attorney.
Does the council know about the EEOC violation of a former employee?
I don't know.
You hadn't been told?
If it's a personnel matter, Jody, I probably need to be informed on it, but I'll probably get with staff to make sure.
All right. Now, Mayor Herndon, I'm not picking on you tonight. It's not political. But did you pledge in July of two thousand eight in Wenzel's Restaurant during a political forum sponsored by the Chamber of Commerce, a pledge that was to go with the help of purchasing a ladder truck for the city of Northport Fire and Rescue? Okay. I have an invoice. I don't know how much you paid on it, but I got an invoice right here for you because we don't know if you're going to be back here next year or next month. But this is for your salary for eight years at, for eight years that, I don't know what you want me to do with it, but it's from the concerned citizens of Northport. In conclusion, Northport must and will move forward. The czars gone, we've got a brand-new day in Northport ahead of us. I'm asking one more time, as I did at a previous council meeting, that each city of Northport department head, chief, supervisor, employee, and public works official work together to keep us moving forward. We, the concerned citizens, are not going anywhere. We will be here. We ask that you join the team that makes Northport a better working city where people are eager to go to work and not anxious when the doors are open at City Hall. Thank you.
Thank you, Jody. Second citizen is Dr. Jeff Thompson. Hey, doctor, please state your name and address for the record.
Jeff Thompson, forty-seven oh one Pin Oak Trail. I signed up tonight because I didn't want Mr. Johnson to be by himself tonight. So I signed up. But no, seriously, just, just, I wanted to come before you guys to ask some questions about the next city administrator. The citizens are a little cloudy about the procedure and what we're doing and how we're doing it. And some people know some things, some people know, don't know. I know that there was a young lady who applied for the position that was overqualified that never heard anything back. And so I'm here tonight to ask you guys to treat everybody fairly. That the mayor just said we save eight million dollars. If we save eight million dollars, we don't need to spend it on bringing folk in to apply for a job. And if that's the case, treat the locals just like you treat the ones out of town. Put them in a hotel, wine and dine them also. So we got to, we got to be fair across the board. Second thing is, how many African-American applicants did you have? And how many did you consider? I think the citizens need to be very involved in this next picking of the city administrator. It's going to be crucial to what Northport can be. And so I think we need to make sure that the public knows when the civil board, Civil Service Board is meeting and when those interviews are being taken place, we need to know. We don't need to hear from anybody else. We need to hear from you guys. There are some people that's here every meeting. You're going to always see them because we're concerned about what Northport is doing. Lastly, I want to commend my councilperson tonight. Did such a wonderful job speaking up for herself. I'm proud of you, Mrs. Hayes. God bless you. Thank you. That's all I have.
Thank you, doctor. Joseph, HR director. Hey, can you give everybody, and I know just a brief synopsis on the process in terms of city administration because above all, we want to make sure that we get the best people, and we want to make sure that we're going to be fair. So would you, because I know some of the citizens may have a, they're just a little bit unsure as far as the process on how we go through with this hiring.
From today forward or where we're from start to finish?
Well, in a nutshell, from... Well, in a, in a nutshell, from start, meaning Civil Service Board basically is the, the first, first group that calls these applicants, and I guess you can start from there.
I, well, we, uh, we did post, uh, on our announcement board of the Civil Service Board, uh, we had, let's see, Monday, Tuesday, Tuesday night of this past week. They met. There was four members in attendance. They, they had those applications one week in advance. All thirty-nine of them, I believe, had two internal applicants. Uh, and the rest were external people. They met. We had four members in attendance and they, they weeded through and they had ten total that they deemed that were the most qualified for the position with relative experience, uh, to municipal government operations. Uh, what we'll do, we have, uh, we got one more person to schedule for interviews next Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday night of next week. Once I have those interviews finalized, I will post the, the announcement on our, uh, board out front. Uh, they will be open to the public, just like all of our Civil Service Board meetings are. Uh, we post them on the board for every time that we meet. It is open to the public. Uh, we, they can come, anybody can come to it. So, uh, after this step, there's ten people that were certified, uh, to be interviewed. They will interview Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday night of next week. After that, the Civil Service Board will rank their top three to be sent on to the city council and mayor for consideration.
As a viva question, how can, how can we ascertain that there is a, uh, just good distribution between the different ethnic groups? Um, uh, how do we know that's, that it's, that that's being done?
Ma'am, w- we don't, y- uh, you cannot ask what, uh, racial background that there is on an application by law. So when you go into, uh, the review process, th- nobody knows what any racial background, ethnicity, any type of, uh, sex, sexual, any, any type of that, uh, protected, uh, class. We cannot ask that on an application. There is a voluntary self-ID form, uh, that is used. Uh, and probably eighty-five percent of the people don't even, uh, fill that out. Uh, but it's, it's more of a tool, uh, for figuring out where we're getting our most bang for our buck, uh, when we advertise for those positions. So there's really no way to, without asking in advance, knowing what, what, you know, background the person has. Uh, that would be against the law. I mean, uh, so I don't know unless you handpicked them, I mean, you brought them in first, one by one, and, you know, saw what, what specific area you were trying to, uh, there, there's no way to do that. I mean, when you're looking at a piece of paper, there's no way to tell, uh, there's one person that I knew, and it was an internal candidate, that, that's the only one that I knew if they were, uh, what, what background they had. And that, that's, there's no real way of doing that unless you bring every one of them in, and then you're kind of picking and choosing from that point on. Thank you, Joseph.
Hey, Dr. Thompson, and, and one more thing. I know you, I guess once Civil Service Board goes through these applicants, I guess they send the top three to council.
Correct.
If council doesn't want those three, we can cull them out and say, you know what, go give us. But I, I think at every opportunity, we need to be diverse, and I will agree, that at every opportunity, we, we need to be diverse. So again, that's an independent body, the Civil Service Board, but I encourage everybody to be at these interviews. So when are, when are the interviews scheduled? And I was gonna lead into my next question. I know Councilwoman Hayes and I talked in our Personnel Board meeting that, uh, we were not opposed to going through and making sure we get the best applicants, even if it's after the runoff, even, I'm not even trying to make it political, even if it's after runoff. Y- you know, we were just kicking that around. Wouldn't you agree, Councilwoman? So, again, that's just something food for thought for the Civil Service Board next time they meet, but when, when do they start these, uh, interviews?
Uh, Monday night, September twenty-sixth, we'll have, uh, at least one interview. Tuesday, September the twenty-seventh, we will have three interviews. And Thursday, September the twenty-ninth, we will have three or four, depending on, uh, confirmation of the, of, of one last applicant.
What, what's, what's the time, Joseph?
Uh, Monday night, the, the one that we have scheduled is at seven PM. Uh, Tuesday and Thursday, those interviews will start, uh, begin at five-thirty. Those will, we have them scheduled about forty-five minutes for each one. And they, those are all open to the public. We'll, we put them on the board like we're supposed, I mean, doors are open just like a pre-council meeting.
Alright, thank you. Uh, item fourteen is mayor and councilmembers' business. I'll start with District One, Councilwoman Judy Hayes.
We were disappointed to find out that there was another sewage fail, uh, spill, but, um, the citizens of the area are glad to know that there's going to be a diligent effort to, um, improve or re, re, di- remove the infrastructure and to, um, to mo- monitor it, so that if there's another spill, we're right on top of it. And, uh, parts have been ordered and, uh, and that's it. We'll go from there.
Alright. Uh, District Two, under my business, I wanted to, and I think Councilwoman, we forgot to mention in our pre-meeting, you and I are gonna task our planning director with the help of our city engineering staff to look at finding some CDBG grant funds for our district, correct? And then we have to do that in form of a resolution, right, Ron? Okay, wha- what I'll do first is I, I'll, I'll ask the council to consider adopting a resolution to allow our planning director, Mr. Scott Stevens, and our interim city, city engineer, John Powell, to look at finding some CDBG funds, that's community block development funds for, authorizing council to maybe utilize those funds for drainage, water sewer, things of that nature. But again, we're just gonna task staff to maybe look at finding some grant funding sources. So again, uh, Mr. Swan, help me out. The end of the fiscal year, of course, is coming up, so we may miss this first round of any kind of grant submittals, but we, we need to start this process anyway for the next year.
Yes, sir. That is, that, that is correct. We need to get, uh, if we can, we need to get this, uh, project in line to at least, uh, make the proper applications, uh, not only to, uh, the Community Development Block Grant Program through ADAC, uh, through the state, but the possibility of finding other federal grants or state grants, uh, that we can make these community improvements.
Yes, sir. Again, uh, ladies and gentlemen, that's in the form of a resolution. Uh, I'll make a motion to allow our planning director, and of course, our interim city engineer, to look at, uh, finding grant funding sources either at the state or federal level, uh, and authorize staff to do such to bring back some information to mayor and council. That's in the form of a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Councilwoman Hayes. Any questions or comments?
Mr. President, if I could, uh, would the council consider authorizing the, uh, the, uh, two departments, engineering and planning, to, uh, seek outside assistance? Grant, uh, funding is, is a specialty item. Uh, you have to have a lot of specific knowledge about available programs. If they could, uh, could do that, I think it would help, help not only find money, uh, project with, but, uh, but definitely help the, the departments move that project forward.
Sounds good. Sounds good. What I'll do is I will amend my original resolution to add, to also allow some, some external, some external forces to maybe help city staff. So again, that's amending my original, uh, resolution language. Motion by Council President Logan, second by Councilwoman Hayes. Any further questions or comments? Here now, Mr. Swan.
President Logan?
Yes.
Councilwoman Hayes?
Yes.
Councilman Sims?
Yes.
Motion carries, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you. One more item under my business, MLK improvement, uh, update. Uh, I don't see Ms. Eloise Thomas. I know she's under the weather. I know her daughter's in the back, back there, but I want to give everybody an update on our project. Uh, me and Mr. Swan were just discussing this earlier today. Uh, of course, council made a bold move to go forward with the project. It's a nine million dollar project where it's gonna be beautifying the existing MLK. If you know where Archibald's is on MLK, New Zion Baptist. It's gonna be a great project again. Uh, we're basically beautifying that area, sidewalks, very pedestrian-friendly. Uh, so we're, we're to the point now where we put together, I call it a citizen task force led by Ms. Eloise. She's been a vocal supporter of the project for many, many years. Uh, but I want to give everybody an update. Mr. David Kemp with Aldott, of course, will meet with our citizen task force and Charles Swan and his staff, uh, within, within the month. So what I'll do is I will send word to everybody on that task force, your mama included, to say, this is when we're meeting, this is what time, so we can go through and tailor a construction schedule, uh, right-of-way acquisition schedule, and the financial schedule part of it. Aldott has to take the lead on that, so that's where Mr. Kemp in his office will come in and give us the direction on that one, so we can get a very aggressive, as, as aggressive as we can, a schedule on construction for the project. Again, I'd like to see the project done yesterday, but I know there's a process to it, so as soon as David gives us a date when he can meet, it'll be before the month's out. So please let, please let your mama know, we gonna, we gonna have a meeting. So again, MLK task force, if you're in the audience, please make sure you pick your phones up when we call, so we gonna have us a, a small citizen task force meeting very soon. Going over construction dates, dollar amounts, as far as how much the project total is, and then we're gonna flesh everything out and, and be ready to go first of the year. Yes, ma'am. That's all the business I have under my district. Uh, District Three, Councilman Sullivan, of course, he couldn't be here tonight. District Four, Councilman Sims. District Five, Councilman Harper is not here tonight. Uh, the Honorable Mayor Bobby Herndon.
Thank you, Mr. President. Just, uh, a couple of things in regard to the, the, um, midweek sewage overflow that we did have at List Station One. Just, once again, want to thank our city employees, the department heads, for the hard work, the fast response. They found out about a problem within two hours. It was fixed. Um, and just really appreciative of, of all of our employees all the time, but thank you for that quick response. Last Friday, uh, had the Tuscaloosa County High School homecoming festivities, and, uh, Councilman Sims, Councilman President Logan, and Councilman Sullivan and I had the, uh, uh, the opportunity after, um, a vote by the council to present the Tuscaloosa County High School with a check for eighteen thousand dollars for a new sound system for their auditorium. That sound system was pretty much shot. Uh, they were, uh, very appreciative and very appreciative of the citizens of Northport for, for, um, letting the council spend those funds that way. Right after I left there, I went to, uh, the new Tuesday Morning. Of course, people say Tuesday Morning, sh- the store's been here for, uh, a couple of years, but they have expanded. The business is so good, and we, we cut a ribbon. Um, it's just, and I tell everybody, and I know people get tired of me saying, that business does better in Northport. Uh, but they are, they're breaking, they're gonna break all kind of records there, just like the new Jack's Hamburgers has. And when we, uh, cut the ribbon at the Walmart Neighborhood Market here a few weeks ago, President Logan, uh, there were six other Walmart Neighborhood Markets that cut ribbons the same day. They opened stores, well, there's six total, us and five others across the country. And by far, Northport, Alabama topped them all, and the people are just ecstatic. So thank you for shopping Northport. By doing that, you're ena- enabled us to collect more sales tax money to be able to better help our citizens. Um, but, um, I want to thank my wife, Kay, for being here. Uh, she's, she doesn't, she's not a spotlight lady. She just, uh, uh, came tonight with her sidekick, Audrey, who was, uh, sound asleep. But I want, uh, to tell them how much I love them, how much I appreciate them being here.
Thank you, mayor. We forgot to add too, Class of Seventy, Tuscaloosa County High School got Alumni of the Year. Is that right? Class of Seventy, raise your hand. Alright, rowdy bunch of folks. Rowdy bunch of folks. I don't know if you've been to the parade, the man, they rowdy, rowdy. But everybody did a good job from what I saw. Class Eighty-two, I know you ain't here too. Uh, they played the Gap Band, so I don't know if you know about that. Anyway. Duly noted in the audience. Uh, I'll make a motion to adjourn the meeting. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Council, Councilwoman Hayes. All in favor, please say yes. All opposed, same sign. We are adjourned, ladies and gentlemen. Thank you and have a good evening.